First item on the agenda is the roll call, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Been a long day. The next item is public forum. This is an opportunity for the public.
Now we do roll call.
I think I'm just gonna go home. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Present.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Vice Chair Parker?
Present.
Chair Kistner?
Here.
Now it's public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion or take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Anyone care to speak at public forum? Public forum's closed. Consent calendar. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any item be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless this is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. First, 4.1 is approval of the regular meeting minutes from commission meeting on 3/21/17. And 4-2 is file number PL 17010. Location of the property is 609 McCorkle Avenue.
I think 4.1 is approval of minutes of April 18th, 2017.
Approval of minutes?
Of April 18th, 2017, or that's what I have on my.
Grace, I think you're looking at the minutes from the previous meeting that you have to sign.
All right, approval of the minutes for April 18th.
2017.
Anybody wanna pull it? Have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Chair Parker, Vice Chair Parker? Excuse me. Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Next item is public hearings. The first one is 5.1, 1335 Main Street Restoration Design Review. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Kistner. The project before you is the 1335 Main Design Review Application. The project includes a request to perform minor exterior modifications to the Main Street facade of what is known as the Ritchie Building. It's a historic resource comprising addresses 1327, 1331, 1335, and 1337 Main Street. The Ritchie Building is listed as a contributor to the National Register Listed Downtown Historic District. All proposed modifications would be consistent with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. Rehabilitation as defined by the Park Service is the process of returning a property to a state of utility which makes possible contemporary uses while preserving those portions and features of the property that are significant to its historic or architectural value. In other words, it presumes some level of change but which would not be so extensive as to impact the character-defining features of the building. Specifically, the work proposed for the Ritchie Building includes the realignment of the front wall and door at 1327 Main to be parallel with Main Street and flush with the rest of the facade, and the reintroduction of transom windows. And then at 1331 Main Street, the applicant is proposing the removal of the applique above the doors and reintroduction of transom windows there. Replacement of the central single glass door and side lights with a pair of wood and glass doors, and the reconfiguration of the remaining windows. And then last, the applicant is proposing the reintroduction of transom windows under or over the adjacent door. Essentially, transom is a structural beam that's over a door, and therefore, transom windows are the windows that go above that horizontal beam. The proposed work is consistent with applicable general plan policies, zoning standards, and historic preservation standards in that as a rehabilitation project, consistent with the Secretary of the Interior Standards, the project is not expected to negatively affect the integrity of the Ritchie Building. The project will preserve an important historic resource which contributes to the established character of the commercial district and will allow the building to accommodate modern uses which would contribute to the city's economic base. Further, no changes are proposed that would affect the building's ability to meet any of the development standards for that zoning district. Similarly, and in terms of design review, the project would rehabilitate a previously altered storefront facade in a manner that is consistent with the historic character and therefore would be appropriate for the respective building and that of the greater district. Given that, the proposed work is found consistent with applicable design review criteria. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving design review for the proposed modifications to the Ritchie Building. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions of staff?
I have a question. I mean, it's kinda petty, I may have misheard you, but I thought you said the Ritchie Building was at 1325, 1331, and 1337, and my page says 1327. I'm just wondering if I misheard you or if you misspoke.
Well, the building, I think, has been generally referred to as 1335 Main Street, but it does, when I looked at it on the GIS map, it is comprised of four different addresses. But the specific work that's proposed affects 1327 Main Street and 1331 Main Street.
Okay, I heard you say 1325, but I guess you said 1335. Okay, so, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
Anyone else? I have a question. Is the reason we're hearing this rather than you approving this because it's historic?
Because it's historic and the... It's a change to the existing structure, it's a historic structure, and it's located in such a prominent area. Those are the three criteria that staff used to make the determination that was not appropriate or in keeping with the previous direction of the commission.
Okay, all right. Then I have a problem with the fact that I can't read the... I can't read the pictures as you're aware of, so... But is the applicant here?
My name is Mary Sykes. I am the architect on the project, and my office is at 1461 Will Road Avenue. I'm here to answer any questions. Basically, staff has covered it very well. Our aim is to kinda take it back to what it was a little bit more closely as we could. There was one place we couldn't, and that was the access door to the upper floors. That wasn't in the original design, but we have gone as far back as we could trying to get the glass up higher, which it was originally, and get rid of some of the things that had been added at some interim point. But I'm here to answer any questions if anybody has them.
I have a question.
Yes.
So is the intent to refresh and refurbish the front? Is that the intent of these changes?
That is correct, but also, we're also rehabbing the inside, but at the same time taking it back to the more historic look that it originally had. It's not exact, but it's closer.
And Planning Director, how are we... Are these changes, aside from the facade changes, are the other changes up for our approval, or have that already been approved by staff?
So there's a building permit for internal modifications. Those are not subject to the purview of the Planning Commission unless they're as a component of a use question. And this site was subject to an administrative determination by staff that it is allowed to have a retail use by right, as a continuing use of the previous tenant, which was Goodman's a retail clothing tenant. Staff has made that determination, brought it forward to the commission. The commission did not have any concern with that, and I believe that the applicants are trying to implement that approved determination that a retail clothing store is approved use in this location, but I'm not sure if they have... What the current status of that endeavor is.
Okay, then I have another question for the applicant. Have the changes to the interior of the building already begun, or is it waiting for this approval so that you can do it all at the same time?
Currently, it... We did not include the front part in the building permit application. We will do a change order to add this if we can, if the timing works.
They're under construction right now.
Okay, great.
It's actually, it's just the bid process was completed, and they're just kinda getting started.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Any more question? Do I hear a motion?
Well, oh, I was just gonna say, after hearing your testimony, what you've said, I really think this is a great idea, and I am happy for the changes that you're making. Even though I can't see what they are, you know, I can hear that. I think they're gonna be very positive and welcome.
Thank you.
The whole thing is changing, so I'd fully support this. Which I can't say very often, so I thought I'd say it.
Oh, I'm... I move to determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA... It doesn't have the address. Pursuant to SEQA Section 15331 as the rehabilitation of historic resources in a manner consistent with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the treatment of historic properties, and accept the required findings and approved design review for the modifications to the Ritchie Block Building at 1325 and 1331 Main Street.
Second. Roll call, please.
Chair Kistner? Did I miss you opening up public comment for this item?
Yes, you did. No one here to comment.
Well, no one might want to comment, so you have to give no one a chance.
Open public comment, close public comment.
Vice Chair Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. Next item is 5.2, Review of an Ordinance Proposing Zoning Text Amendments to the San Alina Municipal Code Title 17 is required to update and modify the existing zoning code regulations governing the development of accessory dwelling units and is to establish consistency with recent amendments adopted for California Government Code Section 65852.2 pursuant to AB 2299 and SB 1069.
May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Kistner. I will primarily be presenting this item, however, Lily Bianco was very instrumental in bringing it before to the commission, so I may lean on her for any technical questions or to kind of add anything that I may omit in my presentation. But as you mentioned, the item before the commission tonight is a review of an ordinance proposing to make changes to the accessory dwelling unit or granny unit, second dwelling unit, regulations within the city of San Alina, and it's response... It's in response to the passage of Assembly Bill 2299 and Senate Bill 1069, which occurred at the state level, obviously, and these changes will affect all residentially designated properties within the city, including the woodlands and watershed and the agricultural districts as they allow residential units. So these changes were intended to affect any zoning district in all jurisdictions throughout the state that allow residential units. AB 2299 and SB 1069 are two separate laws that were crafted in the legislature kind of concurrently and put before the governor, and he approved both, essentially combining the two laws, but as you, if you've taken the time to read them, you'll see that it resulted in relatively poorly crafted legislation, which leaves a fair amount of ambiguity, and so staff has also worked with the city attorney's office and looked to some other interpretations performed after their passage, one of which is included in your packet for your review. And it is worth noting that these laws took effect January 1st, and so this is kind of a catch-up or housekeeping item for the staff to modify our current zoning regulations just to communicate clearly to folks wondering what the process is or the regulations are for second dwelling units now going to be permanently referred to as accessory dwelling units moving forward. To get into some of the details, so it's essentially taking all discretion away from the city with regards to the review of accessory dwelling units. So these are similar to some of the changes we made for by right construction in the high-density housing zoning district. However, again, this applies to all residentially zoned or usable parcels within the city. Just to kinda hit some of the highlights, it now allows up to 1,200 square feet for a second dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit, which is a departure from our previous allowance of up to 800, or 850? 850. So now that's a maximum of 1,200 square feet. However, we did maintain our FAR limitations, and so that is one area that staff believes we still have discretion, so that is still a component of the review of these. However, it does require that these be reviewed ministerially, reviewed and approved ministerially, so there is no design review required for this. These will not be brought before the planning commission. So if someone started construction on a second dwelling unit, staff is tasked with, prior to that occurring, reviewing their proposal for compliance with these regulations and administratively issuing their permit or denying it within 120 days of their application. In addition, there's no setbacks required for an existing garage converted to an accessory dwelling unit, and no more than a five-foot setback for side and rear property lines can be required when accessory dwelling units constructed over a garage. In addition, parking requirements are... There's limitations on what the city can require for parking for accessory dwelling units. And it's, as you see in some of the language, it is specifically intended to supersede local regulations. So to the extent that the city's ordinance might impose requirements beyond those prescribed by the state law, obviously, those are preempted as of January 1st of 2017, and this effort is mainly intended, as I mentioned, to bring us into compliance with state law. There's a number of provisions here, some of which may be kind of more in keeping with some of the past comments made by the planning commission. Specifically, they must have independent exterior access from the existing residence, and we have added to that requiring that that exterior access be to the front or side yard area. So you'll recall, we had a recent accessory dwelling unit proposed that only had a rear yard slider to the adjacent swimming pool, and that was their access point. That was kind of a little bit of a concern voiced by the commission. Staff is recommending that we add the access be to the front or side yard, so that way you can clearly use it as a separate living space in the future. That may not be prescribed exactly in the state law, and that may be a little bit of an overstep by our regulations, however, staff is comfortable with that, and obviously, if someone wanted to challenge us legally, we would have to respond to that challenge. So that's something you should be aware of. In addition, there's ambiguity whether you can limit these to one unit, one accessory dwelling unit per parcel. Again, staff is recommending that you do limit them to one accessory dwelling unit per parcel unless, obviously, there's an interest to allow more than one per parcel. That is an uncertainty in the law, and there's conflicting legal advice on that. However, I've informed the city attorney's office, and they, I think, are acquiescing to the staff perspective, and we'll just have to deal with that issue should it arise through a legal challenge. I don't know if Tom wants to add anything.
Well, I just, I wouldn't call it an acquiescence. I would call it, it's really a risk evaluation for the city, and I'm comfortable with that and would defer to Planning Director House on that, and if and when somebody raises this issue, we can confront it at that point. Thank you, Tom.
I guess on that, I would assume that somebody can't have a house, then put four or five on there and make it like Kennedy Court or something.
That's how we're proposing to state it. The state law is not clear on that issue, so staff is proposing to include that limitation in our regulations as a means of trying to maintain some level of control over what these could turn out. And as mentioned, you know, it's a risk evaluation. There is some risk to that. Staff feels it's minimal, and given some of the past direction by the commission, staff recommends that that be maintained, but of course, completely open to commission direction. There's some very specific language with regards to infrastructure such as fire sprinklers and utility connections. It's kind of an if this, then that situation. Happy to answer any specific questions about it.
Anyone have any questions?
The only question I had, it's probably just my reading too many different solutions that were... I'm sorry. I had one question, and again, this may not be accurate, I may have misread it, but it looks like there was inconsistency in requirement of a kitchen or cooking area or not. So that when they talk about the junior accessory units, they said they don't need one, but then when they had this little snapshot comparing ADUs and JDUs, they both required kitchen, but I thought I read in multiple places they didn't.
I think that's some of the ambiguity I mentioned in how the state law was crafted. It's my understanding they're intended, the JDUs are intended to have a kitchen at some means of cooking facility, but it doesn't need to rise to a full stove in order to meet that definition. That's my understanding. I don't know if Ms. Bianco...
It looked like earlier, and I didn't mark the page, I should have, that it mentioned that they no longer required a kitchen... Again, because our, my interpretation of this whole thing is to make it easier to have second units, so they've taken away all the guardrails that made it more difficult, and so having a defined cooking space separate from the main structure was no longer required. But in our ordinance, we're gonna keep it in there. It was kinda...
It's my understanding that the definition of a second dwelling unit includes kitchen. Our code has some odd language about accessory structures with plumbing.
Yeah.
Require use permit. We've modified that to say that don't meet the definition of an accessory dwelling unit, then meet, then require use permit, and I don't know if Lily...
I will say that my understanding is that cities essentially have the option to address, you know, both accessory dwelling units and/or junior accessory dwelling units. Because the code, as it is now, kind of just addressed accessory dwelling units, we just kinda went that route, so we don't have... I know some cities have like a separate ordinance for both of those, so we don't really, like, explicitly address the junior.
So if someone in town were to have, were to set up a junior, which is basically, it looks like a room, it's almost like a boarding, really, configuration, and then they use the main kitchen, that's allowable in our current situation here in San Alina or not?
So you're allowed...
Change it.
You may rent out a room in your house, but that's an allowable use as long as it's for more than 30 days.
Yeah.
So this is, a junior dwelling unit is intended to provide almost independent living space but not a full granny unit, so it's almost a hot plate and a microwave can be counted as a junior dwelling unit and utilized as a separate living space, whereas previously, that wasn't necessarily defined.
Got it.
Our code, with the intention of this, is to lump it all into one, just second dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit definition, whether you have a hot plate or a full oven, either way, you meet that definition, and you're allowed to operate under those regulations.
I have a couple of questions, Planning Director House. One is, we have sort of regulations regarding side yard and front yard, like you can't put an accessory unit in the front yard, even if it were to meet the setback, right? The main house has to be that. Are those then maintained?
Second units or accessory dwelling units are considered houses or homes, so they typically are subject to the regulations of a primary home. So you, under this, you could put an accessory dwelling unit in your front yard, subject to your front yard setback requirements. These regulations specifically don't require you to meet the side or rear yard setback requirements.
Huh. So presumably, if you were to sort of try and skirt the... Just say you had a very deep lot, and your primary residence was in the back of the lot, you could put an accessory unit in the front of the lot, ignore the side requirements, sort of stretch all the way to maybe a foot from either side of the lot.
Potentially. Potentially. There are, you are still subject to separation requirements between the main home and the other structure and the front yard setback, so you would still have to be setback somewhat from the street, but yes, under the theoretical situation you're describing, you could have an accessory dwelling unit that encroached into the side yard setbacks that was in front of the main home as long as it met the front yard setback.
And then the only regulation really around that is the 1,200 square foot max, is that?
And the FAR limitations.
Right, of the lot size. The next question then is, even though these are sort of administratively approved, wouldn't it make sense, given that we're a design review as well, to have design elements of those, given how prominent they possibly, potentially could be, to come in front of the commission?
That's a valid point, but the state has said specifically, we are not allowed to require discretionary review of these units. My reading of that is that it's even more of a motivation for the city to establish design guidelines because we are allowed to subject them to our design criteria. We just have to do it ministerially. We can't do it through a discretionary process.
Huh. So is there a plan to create a... I mean, do you have a plan to create a sort of discretionary, therefore, here's what is required for a...
So they wouldn't be discretionary, it's essentially a...
A non-discretionary is what I meant to say.
So the general plan and the housing element that's adopted have directed staff to create design guidelines for residential areas in the city, and staff has taken that to, if we're gonna start it, we need to do it for all areas of the city, all zoning districts, and that is on our task list to do, and I do have a plan on how to implement that within the coming year, however, the general plan is our number one focus right now.
You know, our hands are essentially tied by the state, but this is, this could lead to sort of some unpleasant carbuncles added to particular properties where no concern could be raised by the public. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I don't see how that's correct, not if we have design guidelines in place. That's not true. Well, I know it, but that's one of the things that we have to get. We are past our deadline to have that, and we need to get that.
That's correct. So the idea of having the design guidelines does create some specific criteria, and Senior Planner Hickok just reminded me that there is some language in here, especially regarding historic structures, that says they have to have some context to the design of the home, the main home on the lot, and I don't know if Lily, you're ready to elaborate on that at all, or if you could elaborate on it shortly?
Yeah. Well, in regards to, you know, design standards, we did kind of try to build on what was originally in the code, so right now, it's set up so that accessory dwelling units must employ a design compatible with the principal dwelling that's consistent in terms of form, massing, scale, and level of articulation, so to try and, you know, encourage it to, you know, encourage there to be compatibility without making it discretionary, I guess.
But that's pretty, that's a pretty loose... I mean, it's hard to, it'd be hard to, would it not? It'd be hard to address those in a non-discretionary way, right?
I mean, I think if you're, you know, a form, a massing, and articulation, I mean, I think that it's, you know, that it is feasible.
Okay.
To do it. And then in regards to historic properties, which a lot of San Alina is considered historic, depending on if it's designated or not or eligible for listing, we may require like a historic resource evaluation or an architectural historian to do a consistency analysis to ensure that it, you know, doesn't negatively impact the property, and that would, you know, consider it against those standards, so we could kind of protect historic properties that way. So that's what we...
Well, let me ask, let me ask. Oh, are you done?
I had just one follow-on, and then...
Well, just on this, can I ask, if it's not totally ministerial, then there's a design review, right? Or it wouldn't even come here? It doesn't come here?
It doesn't come before the planning commission in any way. It's essentially a staff-level design review, and getting to the point that I think Commissioner Knudsen is elaborating or getting to, and similar to you, it's somewhat subjective. So what one staff member might find to not meet the criteria, the architect who designed it may, and then it's an argument, and then it's, we deny it and they appeal it, or there's legal challenges, or staff approves something that maybe an individual doesn't think is, meets the criteria, but this is setting up all of those issues. However, to kind of also further your point, when we do the design guidelines, we can include specific design guidelines for accessory dwelling units to be more prescriptive in what they must do.
So perhaps that would be an avenue for staff to, you know, to walk down that path, to think about, okay, can we be... to think about, okay, can we be more descriptive or proscriptive or whatever, to thinking of sort of crazy stuff that nobody in town would really be happy about?
I don't think it's, that staff hasn't been thinking that way, and that isn't fully desiring to do it, but right now, I mean, if you look at sheer priority, general plans first. So we have, the longer it takes to get that completed, the bigger the gap in time that these structures could be put in place.
That's correct.
But they, anything that happened does count towards our housing element, though, correct, towards our units required and our, wouldn't they be?
I don't have an answer for that. I believe so, but-
That'd be helpful.
Our allowable units are, there's limitations on what you can count, and I'm not sure if it's tied specifically to accessory dwelling units, or square footage, or a combination, and I don't-
If it's a unit's a unit, I mean, if this is, in essence, gets more units on the ground.
That's correct. I mean, obviously, it will, that's right.
That's the intention of this-
That is completely the intent.
I was thinking that in terms of implementing the law, that is certainly going to be looked at by Sacramento, when we, you know, go for our next housing element. So, I mean, in that sense, it's definitely, it's definitely on the radar.
Well, yeah, and as, in that vein, once we get this adopted, we're required to send a copy of it to HCD for review.
For review, yeah.
But of course. Final comment, you know, there had been some discussion when I joined a couple of months ago, just about potentially having a working session, or some sort of learning about design guidelines from a staff and from a commission perspective, and that'd be very interesting for us if we, I would think, I'd like to, I'd like to hope that maybe in the fall or something, we could do something, and all get some prominent architects and some design folks, and all have a chance to sort of learn what's possible out there.
Sounds fun and useful.
Yeah.
I had, I had some things. First of all, it sounds like, you were mentioning, Grace, that somebody could just build a something, something. It sounds to me like the design reviews, as staff would have to do right now, they would have to honor FAR limitations for the lot size, so you couldn't just build any number. And I think it's a little, it's a little misleading to say that this has taken all discretion away, because the wording is, provides that a local government may adopt an ordinance, designate, you know, reduce or eliminate parking requirements if a local government so chooses. So there's a lot in here that is still up to the local government, it's not taking away all discretion, I think that was kind of a misrepresentation of it.
Noted. I would say it's more taking it from a discretionary decision to a ministerial and prescriptive decision. So it's on, it's on the city now to write very prescriptive direction as to how these are to be built.
We've already got some stuff that are in there, that's in there, so, such as FAR. And then I wanted to-
Could I address that one? I've, this is a California, a copy of the California code, it says, "A local agency may buy ordinance." So I think that that eliminates the may.
Why? We can make whatever ordinance we want.
But it's not up for public hearing, Bobby, so what's shifting is this, our designer review won't happen.
I understand that, but I'm saying the city staff-
What's the correct interpretation, okay?
The city staff has-
We don't have discretion. Excuse me, this is a state law that's been in effect since the early 1980s, and that provision was in there, that's not new language, and it's been construed as effectively saying, you can do what you want, eh, but, as Bob Dylan would say, you have to adopt an ordinance, if, you may adopt an ordinance, but if you don't, the state will impose on you these standards. So you're better off adopting an ordinance, but you have very limited discretion. And here, this is an area where the state has now said with this, with this bill, we want no discretionary review, because frankly, cities were using first use permits and then design review to deny these.
Well, that's what I'm saying, though, the staff still has some discretion, in this sense, that if, it can be shown that you are trying to stop growth and development, you're in trouble. But if your ordinances support the main purpose of these laws, but then have details that reflect the needs of the city, and it's not, and it doesn't look like you are trying to make an obstacle to growth, that the, that the state would not come down on you, I mean, that's, that's how, that's how I, when I spoke with the people of state, and we were talking about not building, you know, not meeting the RENA numbers, when we had lots of RENA numbers, they said that you don't have to meet the RENA numbers, but you, if it can be shown that you are putting obstacles in the way of development, then, then you can't do that. So I'm just extrapolating from that to, of how the state might apply a decision to staff discretion.
And when I, yeah, when I meant discretionary, I meant, I guess, big D discretionary, in that it's not a discretionary application, there is no, there's no planning commission review of it, it is ministerial application, whereas staff does exercise discretion and determine compliance with that, like, with the requirements.
Right. So I guess if our, if our design review that you do looked like it put up obstacles to this kind of development, then that wouldn't, that wouldn't fly. But if our design review, if our design standards, rather, you know, has things that weren't doing that, it seems to me you would still be able to make some requirements. So anyway, I had some other things, too, that I wanted to say. I didn't know if, there were some things in here that, a number six on page 42, if you, unless, you know, unless, I'm kind of not getting it. It seems to me that, I've read it over and over again, and tried to make sense of it, it says, "Removes the provision permitting additional parking upon a finding that additional parking is required related to the use of the ADU and consistent with the existing neighborhood standards." It seems to me it makes sense if you say, "Removes the prohibiting, the prohibition of additional parking upon a finding that additional parking is required related to the use of the ADU and consistent with the existing neighborhood standards." Am I simply not getting it, or is that worded in a way that makes spaghetti out of most brains?
It's very poorly written.
What does it mean? Could you tell me? Or can you-
I guess one of the things that, I'd like to interject myself right now. With the size of this, and all the work that Lily's done on it, I've gotten through all of it, but I haven't gotten through each one of the new codes, and I would prefer that we delay any further discussion on this now, until we can get totally through the codes and be sure we've hit all the codes.
Could I at least say the things that I came tonight to say, because they're in my head, and I worked, you know, I put some work into gathering them around, and then, and then we can still put it off, if, you know, put off any, any action on it? Okay.
Can I question, I don't think we can put off action, correct? We need to-
It's in effect right now, it doesn't make any difference whether we pass it or we don't pass it.
So we are, we are out of compliance, however, there's no penalties, and staff is implementing these at our level, I mean, we're, we have to, we don't have the ability to not. So if the commission would like to continue the item for further understanding, I don't think there's a big negative associated with that.
But just to clarify, you are, if tomorrow an application came in from an ADU, it is not coming to design review, you're going to approve it, regardless of-
Regardless, our ordinance is specifically superseded by state law, that's right.
I thought that this would be a good exercise for us in getting ready to, for when he gets the general plan approved.
Well, other people got a chance to say what they'd come in to say, and I would really like a chance to say what I, unless, unless everybody is so sick and tired of me, I will, if that's the case, then I'll stop. Are you okay with it if I go on?
Fine.
Are you? I mean, say it if you're not.
Commissioner, please, please speak.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so maybe you could clarify that somehow, or, not right now, but-
It could be that removes a provision requiring additional parking upon a finding that, but then that gets even muddled, because upon a finding that additional parking is required, related to the use of ADU and consistent with existing neighborhood standards.
Well, which does it remove? Does it remove the one provision?
So you have to go back to the beginning of that section where it describes what this is doing, and it's probably better to actually read it in the state law versus our summary of the state law, because we pulled it out of context to put the required, the specific-
That's not what it says in the state law.
That's exactly what it says in the state law, but if you don't have it in the context of the bill, it's harder to understand it.
All right. Okay, then I will go fast here. I thought, let's see, before we get there.
And just to, just to support your concern, at the APA conference that Aaron and I attended, and we go to a legislative update, and they said, "This is coming," everyone in the room was saying, "This is so poorly written."
Thank you.
Yeah.
Because I really tried to make sense of it.
No, it is horrendous legislation.
So I just, well, I don't know about that.
Well, just as far as clearly implementing it, everybody here is scratching their heads as to what it's telling us to do.
I guess the one thing I wanted to say, I had more to say, but thank you. The one thing I wanted to say is that I don't agree with staff, and I'll be in the minority again, I suppose, and Tom, I think that we shouldn't limit it to one. I think that there are, there are FAR, FAR requirements in place, I don't think, I think there are other things that are in place that would stop that from turning into whatever you were, I can't remember the word you used, but juggernauters, or some kind of unpleasant-
Carbuncle.
Carbuncle, yeah. And particularly, since the Calderon, I mean, I think that we should not be looking like we're stopping any kind of development with anything that goes against what the state is saying, that. So I would, I just personally disagree with that, I don't know if anyone else on the commission agrees with me, probably not. But I thought it would, I think we should leave that and not change it, and that's just-
And staff is more making that recommendation and an effort to give some level of control over these to the city, but I'm happy to take whatever recommendation from the commission goes to council, and we can talk about that more at the next meeting.
Okay, well, my sense was, I wasn't worried about, just let me finish this, I wasn't worried about being sued-
But don't our density codes already address that?
That's exactly what I'm concerned about, is FAR.
But this says here that-
But it's two different things.
Are we still, are we still eliminating, eliminating these from FAR?
Well, 850.
And our density codes actually would support, so, our density codes only count granny units towards the maximum, not the minimum, and because most of the city is zoned medium density, you could actually probably come in on a relatively small lot and propose three or four of these, not get to the maximum density, and build a number of structures, as long as you could stay within the FAR.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, you have those two guardrails already in place, right, that in essence speak to, I think, what Bobby's concerned about.
But isn't this already the case with multifamily? I mean, it's already the case that multif, we've already, the laws are already passed for multifamily, that they can be built by right, you know, in any, whatever the zoning, without, without a use permit.
In high-density and medium-density sites designated as housing opportunity, that's correct.
That's right. So those, this kind of thing's already been implemented, but, you know, I understand the, anyway, the suits that I was not, I wasn't thinking about getting sued by individuals, I was thinking in terms of the state not liking what we were doing, not suing us, but not liking what we were doing when you send in our report to be reviewed, if we say we're going to stick to the one, given our history with Calderon and so forth. That was, that was my sense to make that go more-
Does the Calderon settlement wouldn't affect this, would it?
No, it doesn't affect it, but they're on the-
So Calderon involved about, it involved four different claims against the city, one of which was that the city generally, through all of its zoning and planning policies, were inhibiting the development of affordable housing. And so, no, this specific issue was not part of the Calderon case, but clearly, the city remains under the microscope of both the state and the local affordable housing advocates, and to the extent that they feel we are continuing in our local policies in diminishing opportunities for affordable housing, then yes, it continues to, I mean, we would not be violating the Calderon settlement by, by adopting what your staff is suggesting that you do, nor am I telling you that you are running a substantial risk. I, as I said, I'm not acquiescing, but I'm agreeing that in terms of the risk evaluation here, it's an acceptable one. You do have some risk, I don't think you have no risk in delaying the adoption of this, I think that there is some degree of risk that's impossible to quantify in delaying the adoption of some ordinance, and that risk is that, is that someone will say, you have, you have essentially lost your opportunity to maintain any local control. There is language in the state law that says that if you don't have a compliant ordinance, that you are, that your, that your entire ordinance is null and void. Now, we've analyzed that provision, and we think that it's, there is, again, because this is poorly drafted legislation, we think there is ambiguity as to whether you would be null and void only as to the inconsistencies between your ordinance and state law, or whether, as it says on the face of the state law, you would be null and void in the entirety of your law, and therefore, not able to impose any of your local controls. That is the risk that you've got, and you are, we're already late, and I think there is some risk in further delay. Is it a substantial risk? It's really impossible for me to quantify that. And I think that, as Noah has said, at this point, it probably makes sense for you all to make a good and considered decision rather than a fast one. And so, you know, I think it's reasonable for you to say-
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
But you do agree that there, not a risk of suit, but there is some risk that they would be, if we changed, if we, if we didn't, if we changed it to, to limit the way we wanted to limit one, that, you know, that they are looking extra carefully to see if we, if we're doing any obstruction.
I think you have two different risks, and maybe more. I think one of your risks is from the affordable housing community and the advocates in that community. I think the other risk you're going to have is that you're going to have a project applicant who is going to want to develop an ADU. And whether and to what extent we are applying our standards in the absence of a, an amended ordinance, I think you would be, you know, you would be facing some risk of a lawsuit by that person if they had said, "Well, I don't want to do any of that, I want to develop consistent with what the state says I can do." So that's a secondary risk. Again, there's no way for me to quantify that, and I don't want to give a kind of a sky is falling, you know, approach to this, so I don't know that Noah has anyone who's suggesting that they want to develop an ADU at this point, so, but that is another risk, and I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it up.
Okay. Well, I feel, I still, I still feel, I would feel, I think it's risky not to, to limit it to one, I think they're going to be looking, but if you guys don't agree, then that's fine. I mean, obviously, we don't know, it's a risk with whatever we do, there's, there are some risks with whatever we do.
I also just want to clarify one thing, I think you had maybe misunderstood my comments before as suggesting that I was advocating in favor of leaving the standard to one ADU per lot.
I did think that.
I'm not advocating one way or another on that, I'm, I'm simply presenting what the risks are of doing one thing versus the other.
Okay.
Just to close that loop, I personally think we should put the, have the one in there, if someone wants to smack us for that, then that'll happen, but, you know, at least for the time being. I do, can I change a brief conversation on this, but none of, this doesn't address any of the other requirements that we have in terms of, like, if you get a building permit, you need to use it within a certain period of time, and, I mean, all of those administrative and other controls that we essentially have, we couldn't be flooded by applicants for everybody in town saying, "Oh, it's time to do this now," because we've got other controls around this.
Well, people can file building permit applications, but they do have to 100% comply with all of the standards that we have codified, that I can apply ministerially, as well as all the requirements of the building code.
Yeah, and so none of that gets, none of that-
But if tomorrow you'd get a request for this, how long would it be before we hear it?
We don't hear it.
Yeah, there would be no mechanism for the project to be presented to the planning commission, but we would-
Well, that happens, I mean, that's it, regardless of what happens tonight, we no longer hear them. So can I just ask a question in terms of practicality? I mean, from the amount of staff time, legal time, and everything else that's going to go into dragging this out, if, if it is what it is, and basically, we're talking semantics, not semantics truly, but one unit, four units, whatever, but if we are agreeing to the implementation and the interpretation that Lily Bianco and Planning Director House have established, what is the advantage of not just accepting this? Because we have to then move this to council, right?
Yeah, this is purely a recommendation to the city council, they adopt the ordinance.
But every time we push this down the road, we are adding to-
It does have to be added-
City councils that we do not have a lot of leeway on, and it's not that we have any measurably different outcome if you go back and wordsmith it, right?
That's correct.
My concern is that if there's anything that's negative about it, we might lose what little discretion we still have, that's, I mean, as was pointed out, so-
I don't have any, there isn't.
Yeah, we do, I mean, Tom mentioned that we, it could be worse, you know, if we could-
But we have those, but those safety nets are already in place through other things we haven't, like FAR, like the building permits.
Yeah, but if we, can they take, could they take our FAR away if they got angry with us and said, "You waited too long, we're doing it all"?
I think that there's some risk that your local ordinance could be declared null and void if you wait. I think you're already at risk, and so-
Yeah, I mean, what's the, we can always go back and change it later, but all we're doing is by moving it down the pike, is we, we're consciously accepting probably $10,000 or whatever the re- whatever the, Noah's time, you know.
You're saying we should make our recommendations tonight?
It seems as though you two are maybe agreeing.
No, we're agreeing, I know, it's kind of, we need some fireworks here.
I agree with, yeah, we are, but for different reasons. I just think, move it on and come back and tweak it later, and I don't, I stay with, go with the one, because one's drafted, I think it's very reasonable, and if we have an issue with one, if someone has an issue with one, we can change the ordinance, correct?
Right, I can't go with one, but I'm for this ordinance, because I think accessory dwelling units are a really good way to address housing needs. And I support this legislation, because it's making it easy for, that's, you know, so I like this way of addressing housing, and that's why I would like to see the one removed, because I think it's important.
So are you willing, Chair, to entertain a motion?
Sure.
I move to accept the new draft ordinance, or recommend it be considered by city council as drafted by Planning Associate Director Bianco and Noah Haush, as written.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
No.
Vice Chair Parker?
Yes.
Chair Kissner?
No.
All right, the next item is discussion of discretionary project development review process.
Yeah, and staff realized that the staff report that was drafted for this ordinance was not inserted in your packets. Oh, it's not in my packet, anyway.
Not in mine.
I just thought, when you said discussion, I interpreted...
So...
I thought you meant it was purely a topic of discussion.
So staff drafted a very detailed staff report describing the entire development review process from submittal to building permit issuance, and unfortunately, Ms. Gamaro was on vacation and enjoying herself, and she did not put this packet together, and this packet did not include that staff report. So that, we are recommending be continued to the next item, the next meeting. But yeah, it was intended to respond to the commission direction requesting a description of our process, and it includes timelines, and I'll be happy to describe it and discuss it at the next meeting.
Good. Roll call, yes, 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 yes.
So that is continued...
We're still going to do our thing, EIR.
Yes, please. So that is continued to the next available meeting. So the next item on your agenda...
Discussion Direction Prioritizing Agenda Forecast Projects.
That's what I thought you were...
So, yeah, so the goal of this, and I'm sorry, again, a little confusion in getting the packet together, your tentative agenda is included in your packet twice. Once, and as a discussion prompt, to rank the items that are identified as citywide planning commission and city council assignments prioritized by staff. And so you'll see that staff has prioritized those, obviously, starting with the general plan and general plan EIR, which is currently ongoing, management of the Adams Street RFP responses and candidate selection, which is also ongoing, and then going down the list of projects identified by staff as priorities, and we're looking for input from the commission as to the prioritization of these. And just, if you take some notes briefly, item five is a comprehensive zoning code update. Obviously, that's directed by the general plan. However, six, eight, 10, 11, and 12 could all be included into that zoning code update, so just be aware of that. That's a very comprehensive discussion, but those all essentially fit within the zoning regulations.
Okay, I thought that you gave us this last time, and you said for us to work on it and prioritize. This is different than this.
It's, it has all the same content, it's been slightly consolidated...
So the numbers are off, though, when you're...
That's correct, but if you have specific items...
Yeah, I mean, but you're saying on the new one, can you give those numbers again? Because I don't have those numbers.
So the new one is just how staff prioritizes them. So if you look, citywide planning commission, city council assignments prioritized by staff, just those are the broader kind of policy topics that staff is asking for prioritization of. The others are current projects that are underway, and those have their own separate reviews and timelines that are dictated by the state. The required and ongoing items of interest of staff are things that staff has to work on all the time, Calderon lawsuit implementation, as an example. And I'm sorry, I'm just looking to see if there's anything else I'm missing. Oh, and then pending planning commission, city council assignments, but for the planning department is kind of a new topic, given that there's expectations as far as when those are done already.
Okay.
So I'm sorry for confusing, the confusion by changing the format.
I'm confused most of the times, just normal.
But so, just to summarize, staff's recommendation is the general plan, obviously, Adams Street, because that's ongoing, and the city manager has interest in completing that prior to the new city manager, code enforcement policies and procedures, that's a recommendation, is number three, because staff has already worked significantly with the city attorney's office, and we feel we could probably get that moving fairly quickly. Creation and implementation of design guidelines is, I would say, from the staff perspective, equally important as code enforcement, because of all the existing direction and commitments made to getting that done. Zoning code update, obviously, that needs to happen, but it cannot happen until the general plan is done. And then, as I mentioned, item six, the FAR review, eight, demolition review, 10, temporary use permit creation, 11, daycare zoning regulations, and 12, food truck ordinance. All that lives under the zoning code, so those can all be incorporated under that zoning code update. Then there's a discussion item added by the city council to review and discuss the creation of a pre-application meeting, potentially with the planning commission, review of the noise ordinance.
You already did that.
That's number nine.
Yeah, that's right. And then, plan improvements, additional requirements, application checklist, that's a commission-directed item, and then, as was the pools, withdrawal policy changes.
That's good.
That was mine.
Yeah, I like, I like your priorities. I can live with that, except... What, can you say what temporary use permit create process ordinance and ZC amendments is?
ZC is zoning code.
Oh.
So a temporary use permit...
Create process ordinance, I see.
Yeah, so that's something that staff had identified, I think it's been on the list since I was working here.
Number 10, yeah.
Yeah, but then also, the city council seems to have re-prioritized that as an item to discuss, or at least certain members of the council are interested in that being created. Well, so, there's a variety of ways you could do that. Typically, they're ministerial processes, so it's a, I'm going to have a, it's like a car dealer, when they have those big events, maybe at a mall or something, they say, "We're going to take a bunch of used vehicles down to the mall, we're going to have a weekend sale, it's going to, you know..."
Pop-up retail.
That's exactly right, pop-up retail, and they do it either, you know, 12 times a year, and here's the 12 prescribed weekends, or they, it's a one-off event. So that's one kind of process that a temporary use permit could be utilized for. It's essentially, when you're approved for X use, and that's something that's temporary and goes beyond that X use approval, and allows you to do it temporarily, but then also cover some staff time to notice the neighbors, let them know what's going on, and then also, oftentimes, when they're ministerial, which is how I've seen them, you have very prescriptive standards with regards to the hours of operation, off-site parking requirements, you know, typically, the site plans reviewed by the fire department to make sure they're maintaining fire access, those types of things.
What number is that where you...
This is the temporary use permit.
10?
10?
Is this what Mary's getting, Mary Coverstein is getting at with the, some, a use permit that would end, like a seasonal kind of activity, so, secondary to the noise?
I believe so, but I believe she's interested in it possibly being a ministerial process to allow the public to participate a little bit more directly.
You mean a discretionary...
And not being a ministerial.
Yeah, I'm sorry, discretionary, a non-ministerial process, so that's correct. I've typically seen them as ministerial, but it could be, yeah, we'll work through that as a part of the review process.
So that would be pulled out from the zoning code, redo of the zoning code?
Well, I'm recommending that six, so the FAR, eight, the demolition, 10, the temporary use permit, daycare, number 11, and the food truck, all be done as a part of the comprehensive zoning code update.
Okay.
And I'm looking for, okay, just because those are all zoning regulations.
You skipped the noise ordinance.
So the noise ordinance is not part of the zoning code, that lives separate from the zoning code?
That we should do, that should go number one.
No.
What's Bobby's agenda?
That's my thing. I have sensory processing disorders, very sensitive to noise.
I think it looks good.
I think it looks great. I'm impressed.
Okay.
So what happens with this?
So, perfect segue. So the city council has asked that the planning commission present to them, as is dictated in our, in our board policies and procedures, it actually says that we present quarterly to them, we haven't done it since I've been here, but staff's been discussing that option with the chair, and was imagining that we would utilize this to present the planning commission priorities to the city council as a part of our report out, and then, obviously, we can include any other topics that the commission wishes to include. This may be enough as a starting place. And then also, the city council, at the last meeting, identified that it may be appropriate to have a joint city council, planning commission meeting, and obviously, there is precedence for that and direction for that in our established policies and procedures. Staff has personally imagined that may occur separate from this update, because we could get this update quickly, and then we could work to schedule a meeting probably in early summer.
If other people on the commission were interested, as I am, in the concept of cumulative effects, and how that's not one, it's not on the original checklist of things when something is being looked at, at least I've looked for it and it's not there, what would it take, I mean, would you get that to be an issue, or is anyone else interested in that, cumulative effects?
I'm interested in that, and wouldn't that, Mr. Brown, would not that type thing need a SEQA class? Wouldn't we have to understand a SEQA, a portion of the cumulative effects? Any cumulative effect, when we do, when we do a project, whether it be a new project or an amended use permit?
Yes, I mean, typically, you have to look at cumulative effects for any project that's subject to SEQA.
But it's not one of the standard checkoff things, it's not automatic, it's not one of the things you have to do. And I remember, like, three years ago, we talked about making that happen, and nothing happened with that, and I was just wondering, this might be a time, this might be a time to introduce it as an issue that could be, maybe some, maybe some movement could take place, so that, that would be part of every, every application, that the cumulative effects of everything that was considered, the SEQA issues, would be looked at.
Commissioner Monet and Chairperson Kissner, is that typical for planning commissions to look at cumulative, or maybe this is a question for...
It's a part of, it's a part of every EIR analysis.
That's right.
So when you get to the level of an EIR analysis under SEQA, then you look at cumulative impacts.
But for non, for projects that do not get to SEQA?
There is no legal requirement for a cumulative impact analysis unless you are doing an EIR. What I can't answer is, is there a legal ability to require one?
Well, you mean to require project applicants to look at cumulative impacts when SEQA doesn't otherwise provide for that?
No, to allow the planning commission, in fact, to make it part of the routine, because I know there are some cities that have it as part of, I've read it in the textbook, that the planning, California Planning textbook as well, that you can make that part of your procedure, that if the planning commission wants to look at any of the SEQA issues in terms of cumulative effects, you can, and you can require a traffic report if you think it's an issue.
Not if it's SEQA exempt, can we?
I've never seen any city try to require a cumulative impact analysis when SEQA doesn't require it. Now, that's not to say you can't do it, I would need to research that.
I'm just talking about looking, not necessarily requiring an analysis, but considering the cumulative effects as part of what we look at, and if we think there's an issue to consider, then we might, then we might, like, with a mitigated negative deck, are the cumulative effects required there? Because we could have done that with the CIA, if, you know, because they didn't have an EIR, and that might have been something we could have looked at, because that's something that came up, and we could have asked them to do.
Not under SEQUAs, is my understanding. Under SEQA, we do not have the legal ability to require them to do that. So it would have to live in a separate standalone ordinance that the city would pass, and what I'm questioning is the legality of requiring that if there's no, so say we required the analysis, and say it identified that there were potentially cumulative impacts associated with them. I'm not certain that we would have the ability to force them to do anything about it, because they're not a part of the cumulative impacts, except for their very miniscule incremental change.
And are you suggesting that we denied the application based on our assessment of the cumulative effects, that they could challenge that?
I can't tell you that that would be legal right now, and I don't think...
We would need to, we would need to evaluate that. Typically, typically, your zoning authority allows you to create zoning standards that will allow you to either impose mitigation or conditions, but you can only impose conditions that are, that carry a nexus to the impacts they create. And so, when you're, as your planning director just said, when you're looking at cumulative impacts, typically, it is the impacts there, again, you're not in the SEQA context here, the impacts are pretty miniscule. So the, your ability to then impose, either require exemptions or conditions, would be limited to the extent that they were contributing to those cumulative effects. Whether you can consider cumulative impacts in, as a standard, for example, that you would create, a new zoning standard for denying a project, is something we would look into. And always, that would have to be supported, that would, that would mean that we would be adding new findings about cumulative impacts...
That's right, yes.
To your use permit requirement, for example, and as with any other finding you make, those findings would have to be supported by substantial evidence in the record before you. Again, I've never seen a city do that, but I'm not saying it hasn't been done, it's something I think we would want to look into.
Okay, so if I can find a city that's doing it and bringing some stuff, you'll be interested?
I'll be interested in reviewing it with the direction of Noah and the commission.
Okay, all right.
You know what's curious? It's almost like, in hearing public comment about a variety of projects, it's almost as if people want a look-back machine, right? And say, you know, a look-back machine, because it's almost like, well, you know, that project created so many traffic issues, and now there's another project, and it's going to create traffic issues on top of the traffic, but guess what, we can never go back, right? So once something's done, all we can look at is the current project, really.
Except that, what I'm thinking is, when you are able to look at cumulative effects in an EIR, they point out that an incremental increase could be quite small, if you look just at the application that's before you. But if you already have a situation that's critical, like some people are claiming Pratt and, you know, the intersection there, that the incremental increase in trucks, that Behringer's thing was going to do by itself, is not, you know, it's nothing to worry about, but given that it's already a critical place, it might be something that's important to look at in terms of public safety, et cetera. That's all I'm saying, I think that, I think that we should be able to go beyond the incremental impacts of something if there's a context in which it's important, and in which there is public safety, there are public safety issues and so forth.
So I think we're getting a little bit beyond our agenda discussion here, but...
Well, that's why I wanted to know if we could put it on this, I mean, you know, that topic on this list, but it sounds like before we would do that, you would need some more information.
Well, and I would ask for unanimous, or not unanimous, but a majority of the commission to direct to put items on it.
Well, of course, I know, it's probably not going to happen, but I just thought I'd throw it out there, I thought, I think it's important.
It's an interesting concept, it's an interesting concept, I'm not aware of, I can't give you a good answer as to a mechanism to get there currently. So I will work with the chair to talk about getting this presentation on a council agenda, to identify our priorities for this list, and then we can discuss further potential dates for a joint planning commission, city council meeting.
That's clear.
And then, along those lines, I know the city council typically cancels their second July, second meeting in July.
They always do.
Our first meeting in July is July 4th, which... Our first meeting in July is July 4th, which, we're going to cancel that. So the first council meeting in July may be a good date for that. I haven't broached that topic with the council or the city manager or the city clerk as far as agendizing that. But please look at your calendars, and I can let you know the date of that. I'll send out an email tomorrow, or this week, anyway, identifying what that date would be. And then commissioners can begin to look at their calendars and see--
Oh, can you really do that without a new city manager?
Not sure.
Okay.
But it would be July 11th if we were going to do it, so.
And the first, it would be 14 days after the fourth, it would be July 18.
Typically, the planning commission accommodates the council's schedule. So it would be a joint meeting with the city council, where planning commissioners go to the city council meeting.
And they have their own planning commission meeting.
Yeah. And since we don't have a meeting on July 4th, that may be a day-- and they don't have a meeting on the second day of July, that may be an appropriate date. But again, I need to work with the city manager.
Yeah, and hopefully, we'll have a new one by July 1st, as Mr. Fennell said today.
That's correct. So, but just letting you and the public know, July 4th is obviously a holiday, and we'll just cancel that meeting. I'm assuming the commission's supportive of that? So I apologize for not having the report in the commission's packet. I would encourage you to read to get additional information on the second dwelling unit ordinance. Housing Community Development, HCD, provided the summary that's in the back. So they provided their own legal input on it, and that's attached. That's in your packet. So the summary, it has this picture on the front. This is provided by HCD. It's their analysis of the joint laws. And so it gives a lot of direction as to what they envision occurs. But with that, staff's department report is concluded.